Attendants at our meeting. Mr. David Hughes from the town of Rochester. Mr. Gary Mansfield from the town of Lakeville. Mrs. Shirley Burke from the town of Rochester. Mr. Stephen Cassidy from the town of Mattapoiset. Mr. Maurice Saint-Amand from the town of Akushnet. Mr. Richard Gamache from the town of Mattapoiset. Ashley Moda-Madiros, Skills USA Advisor. Bethany Battello, Vocational Coordinator. Catherine Tuchanardi, Academic Coordinator. Chef Andre Arsenault, Skills USA Advisor. Mr. Don Foster from the town of Lakeville. Mr. Don Williams from the town of Carver. Gary Linehan, Assistant Principal. This is Joanne Pushkar from the town of Carver. This is Johanna Kaufman. It is Grants and MCAS Coordinator. Mr. John Banzel from the town of Carver. Mr. John Parker, Principal. Jolene Costa, Assistant to the Superintendent. Mr. Jose Invencio from Lake Cam TV. Mr. Justin Broder from the town of Akushnet. Mrs. Kim Parnell, Skills USA Advisor. Mrs. Lisa Maiden, Skills USA Advisor. This is Nancy Souza from the town of Mattapoiset. Mr. Robert Marshall from the town of Lakeville. Samantha Miller, Guest Student and Superstar. And this is Sarah Griffiths, our Business Manager. I am Erin Polansky, Superintendent Director. And at this point in time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Chairperson, Mrs. Shirley Burke.
Thank you, Erin. We have, as Erin said, a very special young lady in our midst. Reached at least virtually. And Erin, if you would introduce Samantha Miller to us?
Absolutely. Samantha Miller is a newly appointed Skills USA Officer. I believe she is the first in over 10 years to serve in this capacity and be elected to such a role. We're extremely proud of her recent appointment and have invited her to join us this evening. She is a member of the Class of 2021. And also a Metal Fabrication and Joining Technology student from the town of Carver. She is joined by our four Skills USA Advisors who have breathed an incredible amount of life into what is now a growing and glowing program. At this point in time, I would like to extend congratulations to Sam for a job incredibly well done. Many of you have had the opportunity to see the video that Sam put together as part of her candidacy. To say we were over the moon the night we found out she was appointed to this role, or elected, I should say, to this role, is an understatement. It is with great pride that I would like to turn the floor over to any of our advisors or to Samantha to speak about this recent accomplishment.
I'd just like to say thank you to all my advisors and to, ooh, ouch, and everyone on the school committee for helping me out. I couldn't have done it with, oh, ew. I'm just very happy, to be honest. I couldn't even speak. You got me smiling over here, Mr. Polansky. You always get the feels, and then I get the feels. That's how it works. I am so incredibly happy to be serving at such a position. As I said, thank you all for your help, and I'm glad to be representing Old Colony. Honestly, I never thought about doing a school organization or a student-led organization. That was never my goal. I just wanted to be some random student. But without my advisors, you know, showing me that I could do such a thing, I wouldn't have been here. And I'm very grateful. So thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Polansky, for having me here.
Congratulations.
Would any of the advisors like to say something? Well, Samantha, I can tell you that your advisors are grinning from ear to ear, so they must be equally as proud of you as we are. It was your video. You were a very poised young woman in that video and spoke so well. And how could we not be proud of you?
Sam, obviously, we're really, really proud of you. You've worked really hard for this. She's been a huge part of the last two years of us turning this chapter around and getting offices that really care about our school. And when we now go to conferences and we show up at competitions, they know who OC is. So that's huge. So now they're going to really know who we are when we're on the big stage. So she's going to do awesome and represent us really well. Thanks, Sam, for your hard work. And thank you guys for your support. It's endless. So we appreciate it.
Well said, Chef Maiden.
We're fortunate to have these type of people associated with Old Colony.
We are indeed.
And I just wanted to add that I couldn't be more proud of not only Sam for her accomplishments, but also our advisors for, like Mr. Polansky said, taking our Skills USA chapter to the level in which they have. And having Sam as a state officer is just going to propel us into the next, to the next level of where we could be. So thank you to the four of you. And Sam, I can't wait to see where you take this next year.
And Sam, I don't know if you could see your screen, but Mrs. Griffiths gave you, she's our Business Manager, and she gave you some big claps there. Sometimes if you're doing it from a phone, you can't see the claps. But I get to see every Brady Bunch square. And you got a lot of claps in the Brady Bunch squares.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just got a quick question. As an officer, what does her role, what does she, her job entail?
The floor is yours, Sam.
All right. So Skills USA, obviously, it's an organization for vocational students. Basically, I am a State Executive Officer. I don't yet have a position. But basically, you know, it's President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, you know, historian. And we all run the organization. We meet with businesspeople and legislators and different government officials to keep funding going to vocational schools and just advocating for the students as, you know, a student voice. And we all come from around the state. And then it also goes to a national level and even a world level, so.
Well, impressive.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to add, so I just started as a Skills USA Advisor this year. And that's how I met Sam. And the first time I met her, she was just so bubbly and happy and passionate about everything to do with what she's involved in with Skills USA. So seeing her grow into this role in just one year, I'm just so proud of her. And I can't wait to see what next year brings.
I just want to add one quick thing. When I first met Sam last year, because I didn't have the honor of having her in my exploratory program two years ago, I assumed that she was a senior. And I was thrilled when she told me she was only a sophomore last year. So to be able to work with her for two more years was a gift for us. She's been fantastic and full of life and just a driving force to work with.
And I'll add one more thing, Sam, and that is that iron sharpens iron. And when students take on a role like this, other students, and we've seen this already, aspire to emulate them. When advisors create a passion within a school that is contagious, students buy in. And it's a beautiful thing that's happening. And every year, we should set a goal to raise the bar and have iron sharpen iron. And you're going to be a driver of that. And that's a beautiful responsibility. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We move on. Erin, any public participation?
Not to my knowledge. I will share that we do have Jose Invencio here from Lake Cam. And they may also be sharing a recording of the broadcast so that folks are aware. In addition, Evelyn Boulay has joined us from the town of Akushnet. And welcome, Evelyn.
We will move on to the Consent Agenda. Just a reminder that there is no surplus property on the Consent Agenda. So I will waive the reading of the items listed on the Consent Agenda and request a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
We'll move.
Having a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do a roll call, Erin?
I can do that. Mr. Saint-Amand?
Yes.
Mr. Broder?
Yes.
Mrs. Boulay?
You're muted, Evelyn.
No, unmute. Evelyn, you're unmute.
I am unmuting. I'm doing it on my iPhone today.
Oh, there you go. We got you now.
We got you.
Yeah, I have to do it on my iPhone this evening.
No problem.
Yeah, just personal things I'm taking care of. But I'm here and I'm good and I hear you. Thank you.
Consent Agenda, are you approving?
Thumbs up. Great. And Mrs. Pushkar?
Yes.
Mr. Banzel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Don, you're muted.
So, yes?
Thank you.
Too many buttons.
No problem. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes.
Mr. Gamache?
Yes.
Miss Souza?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
And has Mrs. Cruz joined us yet? Okay. 14 yeses.
Okay. The operating statement. Sarah, do you want to take this? Are there any questions for Sarah on the operating statement?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
No, hearing no questions, I'm going to assume everybody's good with it. Okay. Warrants are available for review. We're going to move on to new business. We have the donation of a hydraulic wraparound bender model WTB HIA, two welding positions, two Miller welder boom extractor. One, this is the challenge, one Quincy compressor and one Lincoln electric welding machine, SSTT model all valued at $25,000 donated by Paul McGrath of the Pipefritters Training Center, Pipefritters Association, Local Union 537. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? We're going to do a roll again.
Aye.
Aye.
I think Erin's going to do it.
We could do a roll call vote. I'll go by town again. Mo Saint-Amand?
Yes.
Justin Broder?
Yes.
Evelyn Boulay?
Yes.
Joanne Pushkar?
Yes.
John Banzel?
Yes.
Don Williams?
Yes.
Don Foster?
Yes.
Gary Mansfield?
Yes.
Bob Marshall?
Yes.
Steve Cassidy?
Yes.
Richard Gamache?
Yes.
Nancy Souza?
Yes.
Shirley Burke?
Yes.
David Hughes?
Yes.
14 yeses.
Next on our agenda is the vote to approve a COVID state funding resolution. Nancy had brought this forward and asked that it be put on the agenda. It is also the reason why we had an amended agenda. I had inadvertently nuncented to a vote. And Joe was good enough to send out a second agenda for it. It is slightly different than what was given out. I've changed it somewhat to include the potential loss of funding. But you all have the resolution in front of you. I'm going to entertain first a motion to approve it.
Go move it.
And a second?
Second.
Any conversation?
Yes, Shirley, Madam Chair.
Yes, Nancy.
I just want to make sure at the end, it just said Old Colony. Do you plan on putting the whole name, the Old Colony Regional Vocational?
Under respectfully?
Correct.
That can be added.
I think it's important we put the official. And the second point would be, if it passes, do you have any objection that I put out on the listserv that we passed? That's what's been happening. This morning, I saw that there were 29 school committees that have passed it, and several others are waiting to meet, and others have passed it as well. So it's well over 30 schools.
If there is no objections from anybody on the school committee, Nancy, I don't see a problem with that. With the full resolution, whereas it's different than the template they had passed out, I would assume what's going forward by you would be the full resolution?
By who?
If you, if you.
Oh, Erin, yes. Right?
No, well, you're saying to just, are you just going to? I guess what I don't know is, when you indicate that Old Colony has sent in a resolution, is it just to be added to the school committees that have already done this? Or will they see our individual resolution?
No.
Because that is different.
I'll just say, basically saying, Old Colony has accepted a modified version and will be sending it forward. It's very simple. Nothing, not the resolution itself.
That's fine, Nancy. Anything from anyone else? Okay, having a motion in a second. All those in favor? Erin?
We'll go by roll call vote again by town. Mr. Saint-Amand?
Yes.
Mr. Broder?
Yes.
Mrs. Boulay?
Yes.
Mrs. Pushkar?
Yes.
Mr. Banzel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes.
Mr. Gamache?
Yes.
Miss Souza?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
14 yeses.
Next on the agenda is to.
Erin, did you get mine?
Yes, ma'am.
My internet froze. Sorry. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the FY20 budget transfers that we received from Sarah.
Should we move it?
Can I have a second?
Second.
And I'm going to turn it over at this point to Sarah so that she can explain.
Hi, everyone. This year's transfers are much different than the transfers that I will usually present to the school committee in June or July. And that is due to school being closed since March. So I think the best way to explain these transfers is that they're doing two things. Part of these transfers are funding accounts that have been overspent. The majority of that spending was planned to be funded by E and D. And we won't be able to do that this year, but we can fund it with appropriated funds. The second part of the transfer is a request I'm bringing to the full school committee to ask that we reappropriate our budgeted funds to spend as much as we can of our appropriation to pre-purchase supplies for next school year for instruction and to help aid instruction for our students. So that is the two items that are happening with these transfers. I know it's a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions about anything?
We answered all mine the other day, Sarah, so I'm good.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, the budget subcommittee met to review some of the items that were being brought forth to the full school committee tonight. And, you know, out of respect for the amount of time that we put into preparing a budget, I wanted to run these transfers by them because it's unlike anything we've ever had to do at Old Colony before. We've never froze spending in March. So we really want to try to prepare for next school year. And this will help, should we have additional state aid cuts for FY21.
Are there any questions for Sarah? Hearing none, can we have a motion in a second to approve the FY20 budget transfers? All those roll call vote. I'm sorry, I wanted to say all those in favor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. We'll go in order of town again. Mr. Saint-Amand?
Yes.
Mr. Broder?
Yes.
Miss Boulay?
Yes.
Mrs. Pushkar?
Yes.
Mr. Banzel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes.
Mr. Gamache?
Yes.
Miss Souza? Miss Souza, you're still on mute, I believe.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
14 yeses. We're getting that down to a rhythm now. That's great.
Next on our agenda is concerning the transportation contract. There is a request to have, for a motion to allow the contract length for pupil transportation services bid to be five years plus two optional years. The option years are to be awarded by the school committee. Sarah will explain this, but if I could get a motion in a second, and then we'll have discussion. Who moved it, please? Did somebody move?
I saw moves. Yes, both.
Okay, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Sarah, turn it back to you.
So this year, I began the task of bidding pupil transportation. Initially, I was going to just bid one school year with two option years. And then COVID came and just ruined all those plans. So after extensive conversation with our attorney due to the current economic uncertainties and conditions, I am coming to the school committee to ask, because Mass General Law requires that if I think it might be in the best interest of the district to bid a longer contract than three years, we need a vote. And at this point, none of us really know what's going to happen next school year. So I'm coming to you to say, I started something that I don't think is going to quite work for us as a school district. And I think that we can get the best pricing for five years if you take the contract out a little bit further for vendors. The only thing our attorney said that I would need in this through the chair and also Jolene, is for the vote to actually say, "Due to current economic conditions and uncertainties, a longer contract length would be beneficial, will be beneficial to the financial planning purposes." He just asked that that language be included in the vote. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Bob.
I think I understand why this is happening, but I'm a little bit concerned. I'm guessing too, the attorney must have made sure this was not an issue. But I'm a little concerned about getting stuck in a contract with the situation on the ground changing. I'm guessing that the wording that you just mentioned, that the attorney asked for, will prevent that. But could you speak a little bit more about that? How we won't get locked into a contract if situations change drastically? Like, for example, let's say there's no transportation at all. Are we stuck paying for that year?
Absolutely. You know, part of that comes with the bid. The entire bid speaks to a price per bus. It speaks to increases and decreases in busing and, you know, not paying for services that aren't being rendered. So the bid document itself, it's about 25 pages long. It speaks to our ability to change the contract if we need to, add buses, decrease buses, what we would need to pay for should those circumstances happen. And then there's also the contract monitoring that needs to take place. So when I did speak with our attorney about this, he did say, "It's very important that you monitor the contract and the performance of the vendor." Because if the vendor is not meeting the performance requirements that you have set forth in the bid document, that is another reason to come to the school committee with concerns if we do get into a contract with the vendor and they're not performing.
Okay, I'm not sure I see the wording of the proposed vote here that speaks to that. Am I missing it?
No, you're not missing it. It's because the vote is only for the contract length. The vote doesn't have any, it doesn't incorporate these things that you're asking about. The bid document incorporates these items. So in order for you to really see that language, I would have to share with you or the committee, and I can. The bid document that I've put into place, which speaks to contract terms, performance terms, if we need to increase busing, decrease busing, what the price would be, the changes that can be made by the superintendent and their designee or the school committee, how we set days in a school year. We basically speak to every single specification for transportation in that bid document. And it gets into those details that you're asking about.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to see the bid specs when they go out or whenever it's appropriate, when they go out or at some other point before we accept a sign or what have you. I'd just like to read the language. Thank you.
So just so everybody knows, yeah, the bid document, you all voted on that a few months back, the bid document, for me to actually administer the bid, so it has been distributed. I'm happy to share it with the full committee. Working with the attorney, I'm hoping to have the addendum out by June 24, which would include this vote. So if we don't take the vote tonight, the addendum that we put out would have to wait for the July meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that we postpone the vote. I'd just like to read the document.
Absolutely. I'm happy to share it.
Anyone else? So the vote has slightly been modified, the language, so that it reads, "Due to current financial circumstances, we allow the contract length for the pupil transportation services bid to be five years plus two option years. Option years are to be awarded by the school committee."
So could that potentially be seven years?
It could, yes.
It could be.
Okay.
Are we ready to vote?
I'm good.
Okay, Erin?
We'll go in order of town again?
Did we get a second on that?
We had gotten previously. We can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Saint-Amand?
Yes.
Mr. Broder?
Yes.
Miss Boulay?
Yes.
Mrs. Pushkar?
Yes.
Mr. Banzel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes.
Mr. Gamache?
Yes.
Ms. Souza?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
14 yeses.
Okay. Next on our agenda, to ask for a vote. In anticipation of reductions to Chapter 70 and Chapter 71 aid, we move to hold the FY21 budget in the amount of $12,629,818 and revise revenue offsets to said budget to include potential use of E and D not to exceed $314,000, I'm sorry, $314,643. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion on it.
Can I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, with a motion in a second, I will again turn the total to Sarah for an explanation.
So through my meetings that I have attended with Desi and communications with Aaron and Mike, we would like to present to the full committee a scenario that we have presented to the budget subcommittee. We are anticipating some type of state aid reduction for the FY21 budget. In anticipation of that, if the school committee would like to use any E and D to fund the budget, potentially fund the budget and to help those state aid cuts, we have to vote the certified E and D by June 30th. And I've been putting this off because I kind of felt like the tone from the state was that we might not receive the Chapter 70 and 71 aid that was put out in the governor's budget. And we do have our E and D to use. So I'm presenting this to the full committee to use $278,902 from E and D funding, which would be a potential 10% cut in state aid. I am also presenting in the transportation reimbursement fund that we use the remainder of our FY20 reimbursement, which was 84% this year, which is very high. That's from FY19 funding. It was split over two years. That we also use that funding to offset the FY21 budget. So the transportation reimbursement fund, the money used for that has been increased here to $224,833. And that is to help with the first potential phase of funding our budget without having to make cuts to the expenses. Does anyone have any questions? I know that's a lot of information.
Yeah, I think I do, Sarah, only because what I thought I heard you say, I think, was different from what we talked about the other day. What I thought we talked about the other day under Scenario 1 was pre-purchase FY21 at 246, excess and deficiency at 129, for total reduction of 375, and then Scenario 2, et cetera. That's what I thought we were voting on tonight, but I'm hearing.
So we're not voting on Scenario 1 tonight, although you did just vote on a piece of Scenario 1 because you allowed me to make those transfers to do that pre-purchase. This isn't the exact amount of money that's in Scenario 1, but I have to go with what I think might be closest to what we will use. So I think if you're saying Scenario 1 had 129,000 of E and D, in order for us to prepare to potentially use the 278,000, we have to vote it now. We can always use less.
Okay, I guess what I want to know is, tell me again, I heard 224 something for transportation, and the 278 was for what again?
The 278,902 is a 10% reduction in state aid with no additional cuts to the FY21 budget, keeping the FY21 budget wholly funded as we voted it in March. No changes to assessment, no changes to minimum local contribution.
Okay, so that's all you're asking for tonight. The other scenarios, we don't address yet. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And what will happen is when the state sets their state aid, when they set state aid, Chapter 70, 71, and they set the minimum local contribution, we may need to come back to you again and have a conversation about revenue sources if they change. So this is just to prepare for the preliminary, what we have to do right now. And when Chapter 70 and 71 are set, we will come back to the committee. And I think actually says at the bottom, the committee will reconvene when state aid and local contributions are set by the Commonwealth to recalculate and vote community assessments should a new vote be required.
Right.
Sarah, I'm sorry.
How much money do we have in E and D?
Currently, we have.
That's available to us?
Well, we're not going to use, we will not use E and D over $314,643. That's because that leaves $150,000 in E and D. I would not want to go any deeper than that. We have $467,000 right now in our certified E and D. We need to leave $150,000 there in case there's emergency at the school.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of what my question was. I didn't want to get shorted in the end if something happened.
Absolutely.
And just for a point of clarification, the E and D of the 314,643 is Scenario 1 and 2. It is a combination, and it's the cap that we're placing on its available use. You may not use all of that.
Yes.
Okay, Bob, so if you looked at Scenario 1 and 2 and looked at the E and Ds?
That's 314, right?
Right, there's your 314.
Yep.
Is there any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Nancy.
You keep mentioning Scenario 1, Scenario 2. I'm not sure what you're talking about there.
Aaron?
I can pull a document. Why don't I pull a document up if I could, and I could go through it quickly through the chair, if that's okay?
Go ahead, Aaron.
Is this something, kind of a follow-up, is this something that the budget subcommittee discussed, and we don't have that? Is that?
It is something that was presented to the budget subcommittee.
It's in the packet. As Souza, it's in the packet on page 36, 37. Pages 36 and 37.
I got it.
If you would like, I could share it on the screen?
No, no, no. I didn't know that's what you were referring to, so it's just a clarification on my part.
Okay.
And just to follow on, I had the same question about E and D and not going over the 314,000 and change. Is that by law, or is that something, just for my own clarification, is that keeping 150,000? Is that just a good practice, Sarah? Or is that what they recommend?
Yes, that's been our procedure since we've been able to fund our E and D and have a healthy E and D. And it really is for an emergency purpose. Should something happen at the school that would force closure, or, you know, get the Department of Health involved, that E and D could be voted in an emergency purpose after being certified to use to fund that expense. It's just good practice.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Nancy, as we may or may not know, we can only hold 5% of the operating budget in E and D at any given time. Going back a long time ago, when it was sort of regular procedure for the towns to ask us to use a portion of E and D to supplement the budget. One of the things I think you all have done well recently, even before I got back on the committee, was to kind of do away with that and to convince the towns' fincoms that's not good. Having said that, the 150 was the figure that I remember back in the day that we said we cannot and should not go below. So that's the figure that I remember. We said we wanted to absolutely be sure we left in there. And of course, it's that many more years later now, and that 150 buys us a whole lot less than it did 10-plus years ago. But good point, and I think that's, it's sort of a historic position that we've taken.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Aaron, can you do a roll vote?
Absolutely. Mr. Sanamond?
I turn to you. Yes.
Mr. Broder?
Yes.
Ms. Boulay?
Yes.
Mrs. Pushkar?
Yes.
Mr. Banzel?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes.
Mr. Gamache?
Yes.
Ms. Souza?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
14 yeses.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for your work. Okay, items unanticipated, 48 hours in advance. This is joyful news. So Aaron, I'm going to leave it to you.
My dear friend, Mr. O'Brien at Greater New Bedford Voke, reached out to me a couple of days ago to let me know that Mr. Hughes, our own school committee member, recently have the Greater New Bedford Voke yearbook dedicated to him. And the dedication was sent to all members today, except for you, Mr. Hughes. We left you in the dark because we wanted to surprise you this evening. But I would like to read the dedication, if I may, through the chair.
Go ahead, Aaron.
"As a 1963 graduate of New Bedford Vocational High School, Mr. Hughes continued to work in the steam engineering field for 20 years. Upon his return in 2008, he has served as a substitute teacher and teaching assistant. His hobbies include spending time with his wife and four children, skiing, boating, horse. Additionally, he volunteers his time in many local communities. Mr. Hughes is the familiar face we have all grown to love. His infectious smile and positivity has greeted us at the door every morning for the past four years. We adore his outgoing personality and laugh. He is very funny and enjoys dressing up in costumes for the school community. Whether he is issuing detentions or saying, 'Put on your ID,' we all have the utmost respect for him and appreciate all his words of wisdom. Mr. Hughes does not only have 12 biological grandchildren, but rather 515 grandchildren in all of us. The class of 2020 would like to honor the man affectionately known as Grandpa by dedicating our yearbook to him for all of his hard work and dedication to the school and community. Thank you for always supporting us at your sporting events and extracurricular activities. We will miss you dearly." And I would like to thank again Mr. O'Brien for sharing this news with us. The MAVA organization is such a close-knit group of people, and we absolutely love to celebrate one another and the accomplishments of our respective communities. And congratulations to you, Mr. Hughes, a well-deserved honor.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
David.
Thank you.
David, when you see the page, I need to know, are you Brett Flintstone in that picture?
Yeah.
You are, okay. Scary, scary. And I'm going to let Lorraine know that she's considered a hobby.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, oh, boy. Okay, from the chair and the school committee, Mo, do you have anything on the budget subcommittee?
Not really. I think we discussed everything. It was just, you know, we did have a meeting, which was kind of surprising to me to have one this early in the year. But I think we covered it, and Sarah's done a good job with it, so I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, IT?
I have a bunch. So we had a meeting yesterday. So we've been working as a subcommittee to really build a holistic picture of all the things, IT for the district. So with our current situation, and obviously moving to mostly a mostly remote learning model, it's more important than ever to have the tools and procedures in place to provide a safe, secure, and cutting-edge technology for our students and staff. I mean, we've all seen that. So at our meeting, we discussed inventory. So the subcommittee had asked Kyle O'Neill to build a complete inventory of devices. And first off, I'm not sure if he's here or not, but I got to thank Kyle for this because it is a ton of work. Just to give you kind of like an idea of what we're dealing with here, there's 192 Windows computers, 34 Apple computers, 36 printers, 615 Chromebooks, 20 wireless access points, three network switches, and one firewall, which is brand new. And this doesn't include any of the server technology that's just been purchased or anything. So there's a ton of stuff, and just think about it, all that stuff at some point needs to be upgraded. So the spreadsheet that he provided is really a great starting point, but there's a lot more work to do. So we'd like to add dates to that sheet for when the equipment went into service and when it's really expected or estimated that that equipment will be retired and need to be refreshed. Additionally, we want to have an asset tag affixed to every piece of equipment in the building so we can keep track of it without having to ever turn a device on to say, which computer is this or that? So that'll help us. Additionally, we're working on a network map. Well, actually, our new managed service provider for the district is going to build a graphic map of every device that's on our network. This will help us visualize where the devices are and also give us an idea of whose management they should fall under. With that, we're also working on kind of mapping out user permissions. So there's not a documented procedure today on this, which is kind of a gray area, a little bit of a black hole. But the goal is to build a business procedure, which really helps to describe kind of which users can log into which devices. So for instance, a student today could literally walk up to Aaron's computer and log into it. That's not a good thing. So we'll get that fixed. So this is an in-process thing. The committee's also discussed spiral planning. So the discussion of the components that really exist in the building today. So it's everything like devices from the computers to the network equipment we just talked about, to things like software packages, like CAD that needs to be upgraded, things like that. So this is kind of dovetailing with a discussion around potentially adopting a one-to-one computing model with a future incoming class. So it's really preliminary. Don't get freaked out, obviously, since we're talking about shortfalls and budget spending and all these things this time. But it's a future idea where potentially every student comes in against their own computer. Potentially, we'll have digital textbooks on that, and all the tools that they need to really be competitive for academics. So this is something that Aaron, the team of administration, wow, the administrative team will work on to build out a spiral planning schedule. I think there's some of this element that exists today, but just to kind of give you an update, it'll be worked on in the future. And the last bit here, I know I've been kind of rambling, you're probably glazed over at this point, is the cybersecurity update. So the staff has been working on completing their cybersecurity training. I think the number Kyle gave us yesterday was something around like 50% who completed the second unit. If you have an O'Colony email address, you've probably seen it already. So as part of that process, they sent out mock kind of phishing emails to get you to click on stuff. So Kyle had mentioned that a few people were the lucky people to win the lottery and actually click on these phishing emails and had to be retrained, which is kind of fun for them. So they're kind of going through that training process. So as you can see, there's kind of a lot to do here as we kind of keep up with what is becoming a more important part, I guess, of the educational process today.
Thanks, Justin. Does anybody have any questions? But Justin?
Well, I can only say that it's good for everybody that I'm not on that committee.
Doodle. Cam, hell no. This is a hell no.
I would like to thank Kyle O'Neill and Mr. Broder for their leadership in terms of the committee operation. It's been, you could hear Mr. Broder speak. He's succinct. He's to the point. He runs a very direct meeting. And I think that the progress we're making in short time is very worthwhile. So thank you for your leadership. I think the other committee members will attest to that.
Absolutely. The first thing we did was, in this new cycle, was to nominate Justin as chairperson, and it was an absolute no-brainer. And as Mr. Flansy said, he has such vision and insight about all of these. He was able to take a great deal of information that was not all over the place, but it was a lot to take in, and just focus all of our attention right where it needed to be. a lot to take in, and just focus all of our attention right where it needed to be. And those recommendations for things to work on in the future pretty much all came from Justin. So, being in the business, we are absolutely benefiting from his being in the business and, and knowing a whole lot more than the rest of us.
You guys are all very nice, but this is all going towards business continuity planning for the district. So, I think at the end of the, at the end of the day, we'll be in a much better place. And I think our students will be better served for it.
Agreed.
Okay. Aaron, the Free Town request?
Absolutely. We met as a full committee. We've received the request from Free Town to join the district. We have established a potential buy-in number that we would like to share with our local town administrators, finance committees, and town representatives. I, my recommendation would be for us to schedule a meeting to meet with those folks. In the meantime, I can put together a presentation to share out with the committee for review and comment. But if it is the desire of the committee, we could pick a date to set up meetings with our member towns to discuss what we've come up with to date.
Could I make a recommendation, please? When we invite the member towns in, I think we should send the invitation out to the chairman of each board and the town administrator. If we send it out to the total board, unfortunately, we're gonna get a lot of questions, and you're not gonna get anywhere. I believe the chairman should bring back the invitation to his other members and let it be known what we want to do, and then they can give us some feedback.
That makes sense, Dave.
I would add the FinCon chair to that, though.
That would be fine also.
Okay, only because of the monetary.
Yes.
Now, Aaron, my only request would be to give the town officials the time that they're going to need to get through town meetings so that we don't try to rush this. Maybe looking for August or something, or even maybe a little later, where we're not as pressed for time.
I would also love that time. I think that would be wonderful.
I'm sure, I'm sure you would.
Well, I think pushing it back like that, too, they can better commit to it.
Right, they'll have a better idea, absolutely.
Adam, care?
Go ahead, Nancy.
Could we, as members, or at least, could I, could I get that date? I know in the past, there's been some meetings that I know a town administrator was, was leaving, but didn't attend, and so I just want to make sure that if I know that date, we could, you know, maybe I could stop in and just to make sure. I don't know how any of my other member, town members, committee members, but I just want to make sure that we have representation, because I know sometimes we have not from the town of Mattapoiset.
Maybe we could...
Nancy, we had school committee representation, we didn't have town representation that night.
Madam Chair, I think it would be a good idea if we set up a timeframe for the meeting sometime in August or whatever's comfortable for us, and let them know so that they can allot their time to the meeting that we're gonna have. And that would give them more than adequate time and probably give us more than adequate time to do our paperwork also.
All right. Aaron, the information from the administration?
Absolutely. There are two enclosures that Mrs. Costa has been so kind to prepare. Those come from our reorganization meetings. We also have an update relative to preliminary admission by town. You can see last year's incoming class was 149. This year's up-to-date number is 147. We are not currently backfilling spaces because of the accelerated numbers we've seen from our member towns, and we want to be sensitive to their budgets. So, we are holding tight with our number of 147. You can see projections that currently show a 17-student increase for the town of Akushnet, a four-student decrease in the town of Rochester, an 18-student increase for the town of Lakeville, a one-student increase from the town of Mattapoiset. And this is just for the incoming class, not the overall, just so folks are clear. 12-student decrease for this year's incoming class, and then a 22-student decrease in the town of Free Town due to the fact that we did not accept students from the town of Free Town this year because of interest from our member towns in how heavily populated the application pool was. So, again...
A number from Carver, did I miss it?
So, we have last year's class from Carver, the incoming class was 32. This year's incoming class from Carver is 20. And again, these are incoming classes.
Aaron, can you talk about what your thoughts were with Carver? Why that, that's a pretty significant drop? Or whether it's one of the Carver representatives would like to?
I can tell you that we, we do know that Carver is working diligently to hold on to their student population. They had seen a mass exodus to a lot of the charters in the area schools, and so they are making a concerted effort to try and retain more students. I don't know if other members of the Carver membership would like to speak to this, but if Mrs. Pushkar, Mr. Williams, or Mr. Banzel would like to offer any insight, I'd certainly pass the torch to them.
This is Joanne. I agree with Aaron. I think we, he and I talked about this at the beginning of the school year when Carver started presenting to the select board and the school committee that they are seeking grant money and expanding on projects, curriculums like tech ed and engineering and culinary. So, they are, they're really working hard to keep their students.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else?
Some of the visits we have been afforded to our other neighboring middle schools were not afforded in the same capacity from the town of Carver this year as well. So, when we've been given access historically to our member towns, we were not provided that same access to Carver students to provide them with an overview of what we offer in the same way we were in, in years past. I did have some conversations with members from the town of Carver to let them know that that was a concern for us, because we do want to make sure that students have the opportunity to see who we are and what it is we have to offer.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Bob.
This disturbs me quite a bit. We had a similar occurrence happen in Lakeville sometime back in the 90s. We had an interim superintendent who had been a principal at the Free Town Elementary for many, many years, and then he was interim superintendent. And Free Town at the time was pretty much pressed for money, and they frequently, we're, we're not particularly thrilled at paying the, you know, the state tuition figure at the time. And this interim superintendent made the decision that Old Colony would not be allowed to make its presentation at the middle school to anyone, including Lakeville students. Now, that's a different situation here, because it's all one town, I realize that. But I, I don't, myself, I don't think it serves the students of any school not to know all their options, Old Colony being one. It disturbs me a lot. I don't know what we do about it, but I, I feel as though I need to say that. Thank you.
Charlie, can I...
That's Joanne.
Thank you. Aaron, I wasn't aware that we, that we didn't get the access that we had in the past. If there's specific annual types of access that we ask for and you're not receiving, I'd be more than happy to advocate on behalf of Old Colony when it comes to either, you know, the school committee in Carver or Scott, or even the select board. I don't know that people are really aware of that.
I appreciate that. I did reach out to the select board, and I did speak with them personally to make sure that they were aware. And then, you know, we'll take steps moving forward with hopes that we can make corrections to access so that students are aware of their options. And if for some reason we are unsuccessful, please rest assured, I will reach out to you, to Mr. Banzel and to Mr. Williams to ask for assistance. I appreciate that.
No problem. Just as, just another point of reference, we had a local election. You know, we'd replace two of our select board members, with two completely new members on a five-person board there. And we do have some new school committee members as well, so it's just a little different of a picture there if it matters.
Charlie?
Go ahead, Bob.
No, go, go ahead, Don.
Don Williams?
No, I, I just concur. I noticed the school committee meetings, they've been very staunch about trying to hold their students there and worried about, you know, Sacred Heart and the charter school in Plymouth, and every student they lose, they're worried about the money they're gonna lose. So, and they're changing their curriculum to, you know, more of a scientific, engineering, you know, culinary. They have some new program with four, like almost major topics that they'll be teaching. And, and they are worried about, even the new elementary school they built is, you know, a lot of empty space. So, they're, they're pushing hard to keep kids...
Charlie, if I may?
Go ahead, John.
So, this has been a, this has actually been an ongoing issue with the town of Carver and Old Colony, if not so much in public, in private. There's been many a times that we've had conversations with certain school committee members and the superintendent, Scott Neef himself, over at Carver, and they are very much convinced they will put on a good show to face and say, "We're not against Old Colony. Don't think we are. You're not taking money away from us." And yet, they'll turn around and not allow us access. They will, you know, tell the parents and the students firsthand that the education and the quality of education over at Old Colony is not the same, that we're not preparing our students for, for college, and that that's just where those kids go. They're still pushing the line that vocational education is not good education. And I know this firsthand from having two students that had to sit through it right after Old Colony put their presentation on. And it's, and it's a shame that they're doing this. They're deliberately trying to not get students into Old Colony because they do keep losing it because they're not providing a quality product. And I don't care that this is out in public, because that's the facts. It's just, it, it's, it's the facts. Everybody knows that Carver has a lot of struggles with their school system, and a lot of it comes down to funding. They have a teacher's contract that they can't afford. They have many problems with their high school building. The elementary school that they built already has problems, and it just continues to stem, and we're going to take the brunt of it for Carver by not allowing access to our students. I find it totally irresponsible of anybody over at the Carver Public School Systems that made that decision not to allow us into their building, to allow us access to their middle schoolers, and only give us the barely legal and barely, bare information that they have to by law. It is unfair, it is shameful, because we are providing a very good product for our residents in this town and to have us held hostage by a couple people on the board and a superintendent over there that doesn't think that we're good enough for certain students and wants to try to take, you know, wants us, doesn't want us to take his good students, but will let us take everybody else, not that there's any bad students, is, is a shame. And we, as a school committee, should be standing up for our education and be posting for it. Too long I've been silent on it, and it's, it's the truth. It's disgusting, and it shows in the numbers this year. 20 students. I mean, we lost 12 students from our missions. It's coming from somewhere.
Although I will say to you, I will say, John, to your credit, when this was happening, you did speak up, you did so respectfully, and you advocated on our behalf through the, through the town administration. So, that is appreciated. I think when the missed opportunity happens, it's difficult to recapture it in that school year. I'll be very curious to see whether we'll be provided access next year, and if we aren't, I think it's our responsibility at that point in time to vocalize our concern. I, I will say that we've been blessed by the relationship we've had with all of our member towns up until this year, where Carver really sold us short. But it is a testament to our other member towns that they've always been partners and really collaborators. And I think it's our job to turn competitors into collaborators as we move forward. But to your point, we should articulate our concern.
And I truly believed that they were trying, in their best efforts, to do what was right and to help advocate for our school district. But now, it's not about advocating for our school district, and it's not about, the Carver schools has totally forgotten that even though their mission is towards that school, it's towards every single student in the town. And that includes those that choose to go to vocational and technical education. And it is those that choose to go to charter education. It's their money, and it's the, it's the taxpayers' money. And so often, I think they forget it, and if these kids want to go to vocational education, we should have access, and we need to be pushing it. And this is not a slight at you at all, Mr. Polansky. I know that you tried very hard. I know that when I brought up the Chapter 74 concerns, because Carver is trying to push for a Chapter 74 culinary program. They have said it in open meeting, that they want a Chapter 74 culinary program. No matter how many times we've politely told Mr. Neef that that is really not a possibility because of, "We offer Chapter 74 culinary program." He keeps pushing for it. He wants Chapter 74 engineering programs and science programs. It's, they want Chapter 74 money. It's just, it's very much, they're very, some of them over there are very delusional about what they're doing for this town. And yes, I'm here to advocate for Old Colony, and I believe in vocational education full-heartedly. But we've got to remember that this is for every, every kid, and, and they're not doing us, and they're not doing us any favors, and this is something that we're gonna have to watch in the future. And I'm sorry, and, but Mr. Polansky did do a good job. This is no slight at you. Aaron and I worked diligently. We had a meeting with the town, you know, the town fathers and, and the school committee members and the school committee chair, and they, they came over and they smiled and giggled and, you know, showed us the, you know, and, but then turned right around and just did what they did. And I'm very disappointed with, with the town of Carver and, and the lack of accessibility.
Can I, can I piggyback off of John? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Joanne.
So, back when we had the charter review and we had everybody in for dinner, now I missed that meeting, but the output of that meeting was, la, la, oce, the finance committee, the selectmen that came, everybody in every town was all for it. And it was around that same time, Aaron, that I forwarded you the meeting minutes and the newspaper articles about the Chapter 74 requests that were pending from Carver to, for the, to support the culinary program and the engineering program. And all I want to say is, I just reached out while we're on this to members of those committees, and there are members on those committees that did not know we were denied access to present to students in Carver. So, I'm just gonna say, we, we, we have to take these meetings at face value, because the finance committee member and the board of selectmen member that attended these meetings either didn't know or they did know, but there are folks that don't, and it's not the whole picture, and we can't take it at face value, and we have to pay attention. And I will go before the school committee in Carver and ask them personally why we can't be in there presenting like we have in years past, and let them say it out loud in a public forum.
And that may change, because I feel as though our concerns were well-received to the credit of the folks we did speak with. And I think that continuously, our results speak for themselves. We have, we have members of our graduating class who will be attending WPI, which is, which is a wonderful college. We have members of our graduating class who will be going into industry as very successful apprentices. And we are able to prepare students for a plethora of options, and I continue to take pride in that fact. And if this is a hiccup, then I hope that's what it is, and we'll continue to keep our finger on the pulse. If for some reason reparations are not made to provide us with access, please rest assured that the next step, my recommendation would be that, that the next step be in concert with, with what Mrs. Pushkar has recommended, and that we present our concerns... with, with what Mrs. Pushkar has recommended and that we present our concerns to the entire Carver School Committee at that point in time. But I do believe that efforts will be made to repair what was broken last year.
No, Madam Chair, I, I sure hope so because we can't continue like this. Vocational education is such a, a, a benefit to all the students in the town of Carver. It is just, it's such a disappointment to hear that they were blocking. I had a personal conversation with the chair of the school committee and I told him that. And it was just, it was, oh, that must have been an oversight or this, that, the other thing. But apparently it worked because we only got 20 students from the town. And it, it's just, it's disappointing from the fact of the town of Carver. I, I'm very, very disappointed at this point in time. And you can rest assured that anything that I can do on my end to make sure that we get access and we can get our students, all our kids in this town access to our great school will be my top priority in the next year.
Madam Chair.
Bob?
I, I want to support my Carver colleagues here. Back in the 90s when it did happen, and I, I met with our superintendent and I explained to him that as a Lakeville rep, you know, he, he can do what he wants to do with, with, with Freaktown. That's, that's up to him. I have nothing to say about it. But as a Lakeville rep, I was very upset. And if it didn't get remedied, this was going to become very public. And people were going to know that they didn't, their children didn't have an opportunity. And it changed just like that. So I, I think the squeaky wheel in this case will get the grease. And Aaron, to your point about the hiccup, this may well be a hiccup in the long view of things. But there are students, Carver students in this case, who may have missed an opportunity. And there's the loss. And you know that. I don't have to tell you that. But, so it bothers me a great deal that this may have happened. And I think we should do all that we can to make sure that it gets remedied immediately.
And I think you've heard from the Carver representatives and Aaron, that is indeed the goal for next year.
I'll go to every, I'll go to every school committee meeting and public participation and ask that they encourage their students to learn more about OC. I, I have no problem.
Charlie, if I might.
It sounds like you have a commitment from the Carver reps.
Charlie, if I might.
Go ahead, Don.
I think we're off topic.
Yep.
Number one, and I'd like to go back on our agenda. But number two, this is a very, very important topic. I suggest that we figure out how to take it offline and focus on it as an, as an action item, a task for the school committee, a special task.
Okay.
I really do think it's important.
So noted. Aaron, new student orientation?
Will, we've set dates for a new student orientation. It is one of the highlights for us and our incoming class. Every year, we get a chance to see them face to face over the course of two half-days. The administrative team and several teachers come together to welcome new students into our community. We feel very strongly that it is a great time to get to know students as individuals and build bonds. It allows us to better service individuals and understand their passions so that when the school year starts, as we keep an eye on our students in the hallways, should there be an issue, it allows us to have a better understanding of how to best reach those students and intervene. So we've set dates of August 25th and 26th to conduct those two half-day orientations. And we're going to plan to do so as we've always done with some adjustments if needed. We have our fingers crossed and we'll see where the world is at that point in time. There are so many uncertainties that it makes it difficult to plan. Just 15 minutes prior to this meeting, I was talking to Temple Brandon on the phone about another visit to Old Colony. And she said to me, all of my live trips have been canceled due to COVID right now. And she doesn't know when she'll next be able to travel. And we were talking about something as far out as December. But planning in the world of COVID has become very challenging. But we do feel as though that FaceTime with our incoming students is really an important piece of our puzzle. So we've set those dates for the 25th and 26th of August.
And your administrative retreat?
Likewise, last, we started a tradition of administrative retreats when I came onboard. Our first retreat was in the library. And it was less than exciting. It was actually, I had a shirt on today that said, anyone who loves meetings should not be in administration. My wife made it for me. The, the retreat the year after and last year took place at Gillette Stadium. Many of our school committee members had the chance to attend portions of that last year. It's a wonderful opportunity for our administrative team to brainstorm, to bond, to recalibrate and to rejuvenate in preparation for the school year. Our hope is to do something on a relatively local level this upcoming school year. We're exploring options and have also secured some outside funding to help with the cost of the retreat. I'm happy to report that. Our foundation has actually offered to help out with some of the costs and we are appreciative of their agreeing to do so. But we look forward to the rejuvenation following a, what continues to be a very challenging and trying time. But it is a very rewarding opportunity to sit with a great group of people and plan for the upcoming year. And much of what you've seen in our first day of school in the, over the past two years has come from the creativity at that retreat. One year it was the commissioner who came out from behind a curtain. The next year it was Ms. Pam Garamone who did a wonderful job on positivity and the impact it can have on our practice. And so we'll continue to put that in place. It will be a two-day activity. And we're looking forward to that.
And senior activities, senior classes?
Mr. Parker is with us. A recommendation did come about as a result of a meeting he had as recently as yesterday. And that is, we will be in the hot days of July when we have our graduation ceremony. So instead of a one o'clock ceremony, please change your clocks or your start time. It will be a 10:00 AM start to try and alleviate some of the heat. And we have a meeting with the Rochester Board of Health tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM where we will talk about our plan and see if there are any holes to poke in that plan. Any school committee member who would like to attend should please let me know so that we may plan accordingly. Mrs. Batello used her CAD skills to map out an appropriately social-distanced drawing of where we will place the 134 graduates and four members of their family. And what we will do is we will have, each graduate is permitted to have four members of their family join them. They will sit with their family on the field in an appropriate socially-distanced manner. Instead of handing diplomas to our students, they will have the diplomas with them at the time of the ceremony. We will ask them to stand up to be recognized. The ceremony will be livestreamed by ORC TV and any other television stations. Jose, that would like to attend, are certainly welcome to do so. Jose and Vencio from Lake Cam has been a wonderful partner. So we would certainly welcome you as well, Jose, if you would like to join us. And any other of our local television stations who would like to simulcast are invited to do so. We're going to try and minimize exposure and exchange and maximize the celebration. We are looking forward to approval of the plan as early as tomorrow. And we'll disseminate information once we have approval from the Board of Health and DPH. I would like to thank the administrative team for the incredible amount of preparation that went into the graduation planning. And would turn over the screen to Mr. Parker if he'd like to add anything about the barbecue and awards night, or graduation for that matter.
Mike, anything to add?
I may have worn out my welcome. Mike's signal might not be very good at where he is right now, too. I know he's broken up occasionally during the admin meetings and we recalibrate.
Traveling through Rochester.
Is senior barbecue, is that, is that going to be held on the school ground?
It is. It'll be a social-distance barbecue. We're going to throw the food to the kids, Steve. It'll be a...
Kind of hot barbecue with a mask on.
Right. We'll be giving them their yearbooks at the barbecue as well. So we wanted to do something for them. And despite the fact that they'll be distancing, they'll still have the opportunity to see one another, which is important.
Does that have to go with the Board of Health too? Board of Health as well?
We'll have conversations with them tomorrow, but it's not as extensive as having four people in addition to every person. So we have a much better handle on that. We want to make sure when we have over 500 people in attendance that we're, we've got our i's dotted and our t's crossed. But we'll have conversations with them as well. Mike's with us. Mike's with us now. Mike, did you want to add anything? Your sound's not coming through. Okay. I think we can proceed.
Future business, the next school committee meeting is July 15th at 6:00. I would like to do, if at all possible, us to consider coming back in person and if we need to, to do a hybrid meeting for those who would like to be in person and those who feel uncomfortable still coming in person, that it be done hybrid. I just want to throw that out to people. This is becoming, as we can see tonight, votes and everything else is delaying our time. So just throw out those thoughts. If you, I think we could do an invitation, a Zoom and maybe leave it in-person on Zoom, Aaron, for the 15th, unless everybody's supposed to get gathering.
I'd like to continue on meeting at the school. It's a lot easier for me, but that's only me.
Madam Chair, I just have one request if we are meeting at the school.
Go ahead.
I'd like to be able to wear a dress shirt and pajama bottoms.
Go for it. I know, I know that there are probably some members who think that it might be premature. And I would obviously respect their thoughts. And that's why I'm saying that if we could figure out a hybrid method to do this, but we should be able to configure the cafeteria in some way to have us all, or as many of us who are comfortable there.
Madam Chair, according to the state guidelines, today I was able to open up the playgrounds in the parks in Rochester, being chairman of the Parks and Recreation. We've opened them up. We are having baseball practice. They are utilizing the fields, although it's not a, we don't have contact sports yet. It won't start until next week. But with the okay from our Board of Health, we have been able to open up the playgrounds and sanitize, sanitize them all so that things are looking pretty good right now. I know there's some concern about maybe a relapse on this because of large gatherings. But so far as we're concerned in the parks, we're going to continue on with what we're doing right now so that the children can utilize the areas that we have. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, John.
I agree with Mr. Hughes. I think it's time to, to do this in person. And, and, you know, negotiations the other day, well, we had to elevate our voices a little bit, although most of the group there is not very soft-spoken. So it was actually, I think it worked out fine. And we had about the same amount of crowd that we would have for the, for our school committee meeting. So I, I personally, I, I plan on being in person on July.
As a chair, I need to, I need to be respectful of anybody who hasn't reached that point yet. So that's why I would ask that it be hybrid.
Oh, absolutely. Charlie, as you know, you and I chatted about this the other day. I can walk either side of this fence. I find, I'm glad that we have the capability to have a Zoom meeting. I find generally speaking, they tend to be tedious and difficult and so forth. And it lacks the personal touch that, that we have in an in-person meeting. However, I, I am concerned. And I, I, I guess I need a little bit more assurance as to how we could ensure that, you know, things, everything sanitized and distanced and how it would all work. I think a hybrid's probably a good idea if we can develop something like that. The in-person meeting is definitely a better tool as far as I'm concerned.
So we provide masks. We also spray with the special sanitizer. And we'll make sure everything's wiped down appropriately. The distancing that took place at negotiations was such that it was appropriate and, and included far more folks than what we have typically with our, well, probably the equivalent number of folks, not far more, probably the equivalent number of folks that we have at a school committee meeting, including the admin team. I think there may have been about 20 folks there. But I think it's doable. But I would echo the sentiments of our chair. And that is that everybody's in a different place. And we, we live in that world as educators. And I'm living in that world even as a, a son who has two parents over the age of 70 and will celebrate their 50th anniversary on Sunday, along with Father's Day, but have had to really be respectful of what each person needs. And I hope that we'll continue to work flexibly and in an, in an agile manner to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. So if you're coming in, we'll have protections in place if you are more comfortable running a hybrid model. We'll have, we've learned that there's a button on our keyboard and John helped me with my button so that there was not an echo. So we're working to constantly improve the process and appreciate the support of everyone involved.
Charlie, if we have a hybrid form of, of meeting that includes both, would that mean that the, the school committee meeting itself would have to be taped and broadcast at the same time? And do we have that capability?
I would assume yes, with somebody more qualified than me can answer.
The answer is yes. We would have to broadcast so that there is access. And if public, if the public wanted to comment, they would be able to, unless it's fully in-person. And then we do have to provide access to the public to attend and have appropriate measures in place for public distancing. So Jose, feel free to jump in if you have anything to add.
I have some experience with hybrid meetings and they're incredibly difficult, even more difficult than just all Zoom. Because you have to get the signals to mesh up and show up live somewhere, like Facebook. And that's very difficult. I would suggest that if you do that, that it would still, the in-person, the people who are in-person also join the Zoom meeting from there. But that defeats the whole purpose. Sorry. I don't have any more good news than that.
No, and that's, and you're echoing what we found at our negotiations. And the only, the only string of luck was that it was executive session, right? And that was, that was truly a benefit to the test of the hybrid model because we did end up with reverb, echoing issues, the, the struggle of simulcast, to your exact point. But I will say, you learn with every experience. So no failure is truly a failure if we've learned from it. We know that we have to make adjustments if we do utilize a hybrid model. But the hybrid model is challenging. The, the only other downfall is that we do not deliver coffee and cookies. So the hybrid model, unfortunately, only those in attendance will get food.
Let's, let's see if we can figure something out. If not, we'll just remain with the Zoom. But let's see where we can go with it. But let's see where we can go with it. Is there anything else, folks? Hearing nothing, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in, Aaron, want to do one last roll?
Do we have to adjourn via roll call vote, or can we just adjourn because we are not in executive session?
No, Charlie can just adjourn the meeting as the chair.
Right.
Let it be done. Meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone and all dads out there, happy Father's Day.